And he, the board here is continuing on. And that, uh, Richard, good, you move to your next question.
That's great. Dear Father, thank you Lord for being with us on this day. Thank you dear Lord for our life and history. Father, I ask you to continue to be with us and let us to keep us there. So we're as commissioners to, to be able to do the things that's right for the citizens of Sounder City and also for the town itself. Lord, I ask you to just touch it as we go through and listen and make decisions. These are the lessons I have to take this day.
Yeah. What we're doing in place of me. My pledge to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Right. We're still, they need justice to be achieved.
No, there are no adjustments.
Motion to approve it. Sorry. There were motion in the second and any discussion of questions? And now all those who prefer to say aye, all those who like sign. The moment here. Next, next up, Fred Zade.
America, we get started on the presentation, but I want to recognize we got a colleague tonight. They're on the bill. Uh, we got Mr. Bobby Callen. He is Wolf's team employee number one in Sounder City. I live here.
I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. Yeah. I mean, tell me, we have many features.
Yeah. And so I will be a facility director for Sounder City, talking here, passing directly with all the water and water.
There's a meeting. Yeah. Hey.
There's that, uh, we have, uh, Charles Austin, his colleague here, um, going on a presentation on water, sewage, and so on. Like, um, just reading it all right over the email. Good evening, America, the board, thank you all, I have comes here. Um, and make sure we can see that. Make sure it's still working. Uh, and we appreciate the content that you're here with, man, Amber, she's, uh, everyone, yeah, love the history. Uh, she's the manager for the project, very important with you and with that. Um, so we have a brief presentation for you this evening. Kind of give an idea of what, uh, the work that they're doing and looking forward to. Kind of the midterm, the long term, water, wastewater, these child things. Um, you know, and you're all here. Town, town, county, all your water, sewage, citizens, and building every drug. And, um, so we're trying to look at it from, find the most, what's, what's the doubt, she was gonna need, in the future. Uh, looking four years out, fifteen years out. Those you made good decisions in your investments in our friends and everything. Uh, and also the ability to deal with the growth that is on the way for Sounder City. Call of Wolf's Beagles and the development that we can maybe, uh, and reveal the ripple effect in twenty minutes. So please, as I go, the teachers and all, you all are the favorite, ask, ask any questions along the way. Um, if I say something that you don't understand or not figure it, I'm happy to try and make it clear as possible. And whether having more conversations and I appreciate what you all do and thanking for that. Um, the focus early was, thank you Scott Austin, and we appreciate, uh, what you do. In my past life, I spent twelve years with the North Carolina State Municipality. I had the opportunity to work as well, like a citizen for North Carolina. And, um, but yeah, thank you for what you do. So, uh, just quick overview of what we're doing. Uh, for the towns, we're trying to help the town plan for the damage improvements related to water, wastewater, these are the tools of long term. And so to do that, we have to do some population protection. And I'll go over those in just a couple of minutes, but we look, we look at twenty years and then we look out fifty years to project population. And to do that, I'll talk about it, we make, have to make some assumptions because there was a crystal ball of health exactly what's gonna happen. Um, but with the information that we have, that that provided and some others, uh, data to make a projection. That's the first step in our process. How large is Sounder City can be when? And from that, you can figure out how much water wastewater capacity is needed to serve that population in ten years' time. That's the second, it was the treatment capacity that needed to treat the water, to treat the wastewater. To serve the citizens, businesses, the merchants located here in Sounder City. Um, and it's not just the treatments, I know, it's also looking at the collection system for wastewater and the distribution system for water, and those stations, pump stations, all the other long, this system of course. And also how your company is and operating them. Uh, so from, once we have, do the population projections, we've completed that. And get an idea of what the treatment capacity is gonna be needed, four years out, fifteen years out. Then we can build a capital improvement program, what's gonna be needed to get to the, uh, treatment and infrastructure requirement for twenty years and fifteen years. And we develop a capital improvement program, what's gonna be needed when, what's the sequence of them over that time line? Um, and at this level, how evaluation, it's not detailed, call it that, but we use, you know, best available information we can say. And we age the data, correct it or wrong, about if it's gonna be changing this now, we try to check some inflation into that. If you call it a change year, you can correct. So they're not using twenty, twenty-three dollars, they become zero, it's thirty. Um, plus, you know, that's, that's a ten property finance, but so many variables will happen in the construction world. Uh, it's high right now, and later go back down in the days, uh, but we'll see. But after we finish that improvement program, that's where we are right now and I'm working. Is, is finishing up the development of that. And we're, we have a plan before this finish. Uh, we just really need from us to do checking that, um, from different perspectives inside our staff. Uh, we're gonna present that to your town staff before we do the final report that we done. Uh, and just a few, a few bits actually. Once the capital improvement program is agreed upon, then we can begin to do the long-term financial. And that's looking at what are the system development fees if they need to be, we put like the new development code. They help offset the capacity that's needed, they want early development. Uh, the system development fee is sure. System development fee, they got their labor, then the insurance, and activities, activities. Uh, the General Assembly in two thousand and eighteen passed legislation establishing system development fees and creating an inherent, so that it's, it's done. Same from town to town, city and utility facility, so the methodology is the same. Uh, for that, it's kind of like the law on this, everybody get their own label. Um, and so now there's a prescribed way to how to do the financial analysis. And it's essentially, uh, looking at the impact of new development gonna have on your capacity to serve in the future. And the project that you, you may need to build the sort of thing. And there, there are actually three ways to do the analysis. One is called IMF, if you happen to be a community where they have excess treatment capacity. Then you have that to say they're buying into that capacity. The other is incremental approach where they incremental improvements over time, you build treatment capacity, you build collection energy, facilities, and so forth. Um, and you take that and go along, that's incremental. The third way is confinement, we look both of those, you can buy them. And like I said, it's prescribed by the General Assembly and, you know, it's been around for what, five years? Uh, and most of the systems in today, a lot of the systems have adopted those to help cover top. The important thing to think about there is you have a new development, it's putting stress requirement on the town for its utilities. New development. And so they're paying for the people that's standing to serve it. If you don't do system development, they fall back to rate pay, they bump the water to, perhaps a half. Um, and so you can, you know, the argument is, it's not, it's not fair for the rate payer to think, come behind, they've already paid, they're part of it. Um, so that's why it's a combination of looking at system development fee, they need to support your capital program. And there's certain ways of being provided, and how do you use those dollars? And your rates, and the, the way it's backed, it's presumed that twenty-five percent of the capital plans paid to your rates income. I use it in incremental level. Um, which is gonna be probably most of why it's out there to be good, incremental level. Um, so that's kind of the philosophy behind that. And so that law that the General Assembly passed in twenty eighteen is based on a national standard by the American Water Works Association. You, a lot of it says, of all kinds. What can balance this, what is? Yeah, I'll say, I'll say that's the app, I was looking at it, I'm trying to do that, it's too much in the presentation, that was system development. So we'll, we'll look at, we'll know that what your capital program needs off for the next twenty years. And that's the other thing about system development fees. You can, the statute requires you have to develop minimum ten-year plan horizon and not more than twenty. So you can, you can pick where you want to extend or somewhere up until twenty. Um, and so that's prescribed by, by the statute. So we're looking at what are the needs in the next twenty years? And you do the, do the calculations, but it generate, it generates certain amount of revenue based upon, it's something to remain, well, how many homes are gonna be built? How many businesses are gonna be built? How many new industries will come to the community? And it comes back down, they pay, they come typically to the new side. You know, if you build a home, you typically have a three or four inch meter. And if we got a lot of residential neutral. Um, so hold that, what, what is that equivalent residential, a typical single-family three-bedroom house needs? You get to that and then you use that to go slide on the scale. If you have a car wash that needs a two-inch meter. It pays, there's a, a factor in there for the difference between three, four-inch meter and two-inch meter. It's not there. It can eat that, I need, we'll see that, and we'll see the table in a few months. Uh, so the, the car wash needs a two-inch meter. They'll pay the equivalent fee of what three, four inches, what they two inches pay for capacity, for that water line and sewer. So it's, it's about that particular problem. And so that's how system development fee work. So we, we'll look at the revenue that can be generated by those, implemented by the town. And then also an apartment and sewer, what are needed, uh, to, to help pay for operations as well as paying that. Um, and one thing, uh, might say this again later on in my comments, uh, you may say, well, we can get all those capital projects funded by grants. Don't be fooled by that. Um, four years ago, there was a lot of money, there was money that was lost. Um, and the amount of money they're talking about, they're talking about hundreds and there is a lot of the next twenty years. So that, like that same thing is hundreds and there is a lot, it's just gonna be made. Um, you'll be able to get some, right? You'll, you'll be able to get some low interest loans or no interest loan, you can take, or say with all the funds. Um, but, you know, it's gonna take, generate capital, and the only way to generate capital, local government unfortunately, for utilities is system development fee. Um, so there are some smaller grants, uh, kind of what you see is, after COVID, you have the ARCA money. Um, and it's kind of one double way down. There's the infrastructure bill, for example, that came out of the federal government, the scoring fund existed programs. Um, and it sounds like a lot of money when you think about it nationwide, and you could pay the dollars for us. But when we get down and when we look at the needs of the nation, it's still comes up shortly. And a lot of that, particularly with going up in the strength of the patient. Uh, so it's, uh, there's gonna be limited, there's, there's some, you're not gonna find hundreds and there is a dollar on grants or appropriations, you can get, and I know you're all working in corporations and dealing with some demand. And that could be a hell, but it, there's, there's not gonna be the complete split. Um, they have to kind of holler all those things together, the number of the financial funds to, to make these investments. So we'll, once we have the CIP done, this capital improvement program is to do the financial plan, come out and show you what's gonna take on a rate perspective long-term. What, what your rate is gonna need, and part of that, we're projecting the growth of the town to the population. If you have about eight thousand population today, you know, if you, when you hit ten thousand, that may be more rate pay. So if you're, if that helps us with, then multiply it, that, that builds our model, the growth as well, so the individual ones. But, um, you know, it's, don't be fooled, it's expected to be a water sewer. Um, and so that's, that, we'll come back with that financial plan and that analysis, make recommendations for y'all in the long run. And then the final piece, my focal work is not related to water and sewer at all. It's a day, stormwater, not that, utility, conceptual assessment for the town. And, uh, so you, if you want to implement that stormwater utility, allow you to create a stormwater program where you can get the rest of that stormwater capital. Uh, and other stormwater needs of the community, and I'll talk about that at the very end of the presentation. Any questions about what, what is we're trying to do to be more? So this is kind of our schedule, kind of put it in perspective, we started working late December. Um, stormwater utility fee part, which was, uh, that, and wanted that right on, um, so you, you're helping. You all made some decisions and recommendations for the budget that you're working on to be adopted for what you are one. And we presented that in March. The CIP kind of proof program, long-range plan report, we have Dr. Benny and Tony now, and we'll be presenting that to your staff at the end of this month, in about two weeks. And once we get their feedback, we'll tweak it if needed, uh, and then we'll present that finally toward in May. Once everybody can bring it there, this is the plan and direction we need to be going, then we can begin to do the financial analysis. To figure out if it's ex come or made the dollars over the twenty-year period, how did we get there? And, um, so we'll, we'll do that, we'll start that work in August. And, uh, people will see that this part, you know, so that's just a game chart to show the little, but we'll be finished uh, at the end of this year, overall, so that you have an idea of, particularly as you go this time, actually, plan for your probably think about and say, um, that you'll have this information, uh, that you uh, looking at for, for your long-term, uh, system development fee rates as well as water sewer rates. And just, you know, I'll talk about it in just a few moments, but it, it, as soon as you can start building those, uh, planning for those, that, that easier, it's gonna be everywhere for time. Um, so it's, it's really important. And so this, this evening, we'll be making internal recommendations. Uh, for, for this upcoming, would you only consider? We'll look at population projection. So looking at the campsite as a, as kind of a driver for the growth of Sounder City. You know, we're assuming that, that seven thousand jobs can eventually be created on the campsite. And a multiplier of the ratio of job growth, the ripple effect of that, three-one ratio. So if you look out from that, as the jobs are created, homes are built, other support businesses are built, it's the ripple effect of the service accommodating. Um, over twenty, a year period, which one was, we're projecting that Sounder City will be somewhere around twenty-seven thousand people. So that's, that's three, four times the size of Sounder City. Um, twenty years sound like a long time, but it's not. Uh, it won't, it's a, and it's been demonstrated in other communities that that drive was like this too. Um, and, uh, for example, I need to go to the parent of Ohio Springs, I moved there in two thousand and three, or in L.A., I think. Today it's four and seven thousand people. Twenty years later. Um, and they, they haven't had that kind of graph like Wolf's team. That they're getting some now, there's pharmaceutical plants getting bigger, but, you know, it's just, um, it, it's just, it's just amazing to see them back, I mean, and keeping up with the utility, it's a challenge. So you can see by twenty, again, twenty year out, twenty thousand, about twenty-seven thousand people. And taking that out for fifty years, by twenty-seventy, so looking at, just shot fifty thousand people in Sounder City, based upon growth. And again, this is not a perfect science, a lot of variable what can happen with the time, depending on that on there. Um, but based upon that data, we have all this work we've been following ahead, time goes by. Questions about population protection? So the next step, and I go, once we know what kind of population we're trying to plan for, is what is it gonna take from a wastewater treatment and a water treatment to serve, that's a really? So today, Sounder City has four million gallons of water, this is four million gallons a day. And four million gallons of wastewater, and you're in the process of expanding that. Um, by twenty twenty-three, looking at for the next twenty years, you'll need about eight point six billion gallons per day of water. And eight point one four gallons, a million gallons per day of wastewater. For about twenty-seven thousand population per year. So you can, so you can see your water, the water doubled, and your wastewater, the water doubled, clear. From which one day, not from the which, which word on the ground or now. So one forward, three numbers, would, wouldn't say that's largely dependent upon what types of, or they're coming in, so, uh, where potentially could be a greater need than that. It could be, yeah. And if you get a heavy water user, you know, and again, we, we're making assumptions here, not knowing what's gonna, first of all. Um, but if you get a heavy water user, uh, and you have some now, and, uh, and we'll see the heavy water user. Um, that can serve the journey, so, you know, so this, this is hard to know for sure. And we just do it based on that pure population, or what's needed to serve the population, and just, but again, you can't, you know, I know you're having, doing a man, playing right now, but, uh, again, that's, uh, that's not an exact science either. Um, things change over time, and, you know, so it's, it's our best guess today. But those, those numbers could change, that's, that's for sure.
Important to know that this are not appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and they're, that is, that is the state of the game, you have to design for what higher, you can act, you have to design two and a half times for wastewater, two times for water. Uh, for your P P days. Um, so if you use less water decent than you usually would, you bottle.
You said two and a half times for waters?
Three times for water. Is what we use, the two and a half, the right water, in the P P time.
You'd have to take the, essentially A, multiply by two and two point five to have the necessary capacity by two thousand and forty-three.
And that's, that's, that's the requirement I'm saying, do you? But you, you, when you think about, and you've got P P backers, and you've got I and I issues, when you have rain big, rainstorms, that flowing increases. And you have to be able to accommodate those, those days, they don't have to overflow, getting to the crease in those kind of things. Then if you look out twenty-seventy, um, you're looking at about just shot sixteen billion gallons of water needed and thirteen billion gallons of water in average state of flow. And, you know, and again, that's way out, that's fifty years from now, you know, hard to know what's gonna happen next year. But, you know, but you, you've gotta get, begin thinking about that, cause let's say, or you don't have to make, you never did that. To get to your, the factory need for twenty-four, three, and you need to be thinking about how the needs for twenty-seventy affect that, you don't wanna say, do a waste, do a plant expansion. And, and you might find that maybe better off to go to a new plant site, start doing, preparing for the future data. We don't know that yet, but that's just an example, um, to be thinking about what those long-term needs are, that we might, you know, strain into the business, uh, in the future. And that's just, uh, that's just Joe with the treatment cost, you got to collect the wastewater, you get it from the plant, you gather the water, and get it to all of you. So there, there, there's pipeline, pump station, lift station, all of those, so that too. And part of that's payable by development is purged, but, um, so there is investment, and that, it's, it's, uh, convinced.
So what you know, you might go by, in the left, you know. You want to be, you use, to be straight, to what they have, it will be straight, it will be straight. What a pressure.
Well, that's, that's, uh, also, uh, um, that's part of the program, I asked you to build in your, like, in your rates. The water sewer, they don't last, so, so, and Sounder City is no different than any other community in the country. Um, you look back to, again, I mentioned the grand track, and like, so here's the day, what were my days at the league? In nineteen seventy-two, ninety-five percent of the water wastewater construction cost in the country that were made for public infrastructure was paid for by the federal. By two thousand and ten, ninety-five percent of the construction cost of public infrastructure for water and sewer was paid for by what, it's flawed. And that, third, it would appear, there's, used to get a lot of programs back in the seventies and maybe they dried up, but, 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 but. But that, if, you're gonna have to have those programs to replace parts, the line parts with all the lights in the room. That contributes to the I and I compared to water loss, how much you're treating, cause you don't wanna lose your typical water, completes, you don't want the, they treat it normal, I think the way for treating water, it's not a lot treated. But it's, it's, it's a big investment. And that's, and that's a struggle for all of us. Um, the what I call funding depreciation of high-weather, kind of high material and the conditions of the soil and a lot of other things, how long it's gonna last? Or we say in the running dawn, that it may be sixty years from now, a pipe that will replace a line, but it's a terrible deal, and most of them are and it's challenging. Catching them. And so it's, it's, I don't have an easy answer, but it's, it's part of the program, overall program, and what we're gonna watch. Great question. So this is, uh, taking a look at your rates. A little bit hard to see, but hopefully you can see it, but we've got the top graph looking at water, and the bottom graph is looking at wastewater. And so the columns, uh, you see they have watched only two, three rates, the families, the fifteen rates. But residential and commercial, the most water wastewater, your inside rate and your outside rate. And you're like most every other community in the state, your outside rates typically double your inside rate. Um, and, and that, that's very standard, so, so, so. So right now, your base rate, so what base rate means is, if you do zero down the wall, you have one meter, you're gonna pay twenty-three dollars. So like now, your base rate, so what base rate means is if you do zero gallons of water, you have one meter, you're gonna pay twenty three dollars. You know, that's, that's just the base rate for, for, for kind of being. And like now, the town calling for fifty, for thousand gallons. Um, and you can see that that goes down, but outside rate is essentially double. The base rate, the cost per gallon is double. Home sewer, all commercial, it's a little bit different, twenty seven dollar base rate. It's a six dollar per gallon. Um, for your, for your consumption rates, and then those double to the outside. What we're recommending in this. So what, what we're looking at, you know, with the recommended rates, a recommended step over a few years. Seven, you're, you're not, financial plan will be out of there. So this is an animal set, go ahead, you're gonna have entrances, you're gonna need entrances. So we haven't finished that part, I will be finished as follow that part. Um, but just to get you all started, um, with this, to have the, the incremental entrances. To show what you're saying, this is the starting point. Yeah, we will need to do more of what's presented here today. Yeah, there'll, there'll be more, and then we don't know what we, for, for past, just in revenue based on something. And that's one thing that you all don't have completely followed. You can set a rate, it's just hypothetically, you say it's, that's, it's definitely that's four thousand dollars very high. That's what the, what the, the math supports. But she don't have control over how many homes, you know, private market is gonna drive, there can be good times and not so good. And so it's, it, it's, they develop a financial plan, like I said, we'll develop a model that shows the growth. Of edge, your base growth that creates an economy scale too. Um, so we'll, we'll create a model, this is just an animal to get you to that point, so. Early next year, you'll be able to see a clear picture of what that long term. Step increases that can be needed over the next coming several years. The rents. So if you go over to the recommended for F Y twenty three, twenty four. What we're recommending, again, this is just an animal, kind of stock gap through the year. Uh, of increasing the base rate by two dollars, uh, for water. And increasing the, uh, consumption rate by a dollar. And, and next slide will show you kind of the impact of what you live in physical. Mark. And then, and the same thing for the outside, it's just. Uh, an increase of that from forty six dollars, we're down to fifty dollars. And from nine dollars to ten dollars for, for that. Um, same, and you can see the impact, same for the commercial, it's the same increases, uh, for the most part. That you see there. And on wastewater, the same methodology was proposed there, you, you, your base rate for residential wastewater, forty seven. We recommend that go seventeen dollars, get to a random number. Um, and increasing the consumption rate, and that's encouraging that two dollars. Uh, wastewater is more expensive, so are the utility system versus water, both are expensive, but wastewater is more expensive. So a two dollar increase there. And, and same thing for that, so same proportions for the outside. And then you can see for commercials inside, twenty three dollars, that's breaking to twenty five, six, eight for consumption. And it's double for outside. And this is just kind of an animal set, you could, you all have to think about your long term. Uh, financial needs for the system. Any questions about that before there's the next slide? So if you look at typical residential users, seven, four thousand gallon. Um. You can see the, the difference in, in, for inside or water, if you got three one dollars a month. With this recommended increase, that would go to forty, forty seven dollars, so six dollar increase. Uh, that, that average user might see on the water side. And on the wastewater side, uh, they would be like a ten dollar, like, they'd be about seventeen dollar. Increase for the average user for the inside water. And wastewater, uh, big. And it's a little bit different for commercial, I was just telling that for the outside. Those play outside of the fourth events of South City. So that's what we're recommending you all do for this year. Um, and again, we'll have better data, more complete data and analysis for you, uh, later this year. Questions about that? I know it's not good news. It's never easy.
No, the man goes again.
So we, as part of, you see, as part of the national model, we can do as you look at that, and what the rate increase will set up for the, under the rate difference. Right. So we're, we're doing forecasting on, on another phone, building, you know, and, and making assumptions, but you have to do something to build a model. Um, and trying to be conservative about it too, you know, not. So the, the last thing you want to say, the, the, the cost you spend on, we know we're wrong to be taking on. Um, so try, we'll try to sort of, but again, it's, it's a little bit of a little. More questions?
Uh, one, one thing that, this might come here in place of my ears. I mean, twenty, twenty years are, um, need for wastewater to make a something. Being out of time, that it, well, thought that, uh, two and a half times. That early.
Yes, sir.
So that would be what, six, six, you need gallons. Fast, you know, twenty, forty, right, close. In your calculation, this goes back more to the water side. Uh, I'm going to talk, I'm going to, then, then on. Think the maximum capacity on our reservoir. It's somewhere between seven and twenty three gallons that. Are you, in your calculations, are you? Uh, recommending or? That being something you, for that other. And, well, maybe gallons of water made of.
Yes, sir. We're part of a, we're developing capital group of program and including alternative analysis, so when you look longer. Your water supply and your wastewater disposal may not all be here, South City. It may be with the nearby community. And so you are back, yes, sir, and that's part of the, looking at the big picture. And that's a really great question. Any other questions? So. This would be kind of going to see the, or during our rates, if that's a fair going to. They, keep in mind, your water wastewater, so this is, all guns off, this is a business. Um, if you have, uh, comments that appear with private, long extension, you know, they're escalating. They're going to see the guy in that contrast. Those, those say, simple things, the things, the operations, but we chose. The labor costs go up, they're actually over, the labor costs go up. And after health insurance is going there, you're, 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 it's, it's rare. The insurance cost will, the chemical cost will, the utility cost will, so it's all in that increase. And actually, in fact, with, you know, that call will do a business, even if you're not grown, it still goes up. Uh, with the growth, you can, it's soft a bit a little bit, but there's, keep in mind. And there's managing a system like that, there should be routine entries. The cost of those, and that, and they, and they vary, again, that's fun, fuel cost will, will, through the roof like that. Um, chemical, uh, it's really, really. And when you look at projections going up, seems to go like three times what they were this last year. So it's, it's spent at the highway, these buildings. And it knows. A lot of communities have a hard time, you know, helping the residents understand. That water is part of everything. If you, if you don't have water, then you can't have wastewater. Uh, and if you don't have water, you can't have homes, you can't have businesses, it's, it's a, this is required. And, you know, part of, our problems would be at the league, for example, you kind of definitely issue dealing with the general assembly, dealing with the. State agencies, um. And. I guess it's just perfectly bonded, made of. What people are willing to pay for the cable bill. First of all, they're willing to pay their water.
Or lose.
Or be, exactly. Uh, we're in internet today, we're going to become a utility account, and they said, we didn't deliver, say that. But without a water wastewater, you can't have anything. All the minutes. It's the primary, most important investment from them to start it. And I wish I had, if that was true, you would, you know. I'm going to give you hundred today, but I'm, I'm. And so you're gonna have to find a way to define, but I wish I saw some of it for some of it. The other way to do this, so, I have one thing, I don't know many. So, beyond this, we get what I can know. Going in the CPI by increase today in November, but, but, no. Look at the call for this year. Um, you know, it's not a very, you do it every other year, and it, and it'll blow up. But at least we're changing all ways in five years, we're changing this. And if they have, from a, they got five, we're from a practical discussion. You know, I'd rather have a five dollar increase each year than get a fifty dollar increase in your, in your life. Um, you know, how that's one of the really boring. So this, uh, you know, it's, the, the cost goes up every year, and now that it's done. Up there. Other questions?
This is gonna be answered somewhere else. Through the current situation, uh, in the view, and they're trying to stay out of where our limits. On a little bit of like the A D C, how that comes through. And for the most reason. Um, I'm. Pretty sure that means more money will stand in the way. Uh, we may have to. Figure that, I know that's a, that's a.
But maybe that is, a very difficult one, I shouldn't have made that. The requirements for treating your water, the requirements for treating your wastewater, it's going to get more and more expensive, it's more and more expensive. We now have new P K S requirements, pretty poor. And it's, yes, definitely, but notice it's a requirement, so there's no funding for. Um, so there, there are a lot, so the cost, you know, to get that, those additional implements, you're gonna have to treat for how I'm standing. But there are running more and more of the cabinets after P K S. So what, what's next? And it just continues to go. Uh, working with another client, um, in this same river basin. Uh, intervening with T U, a few weeks ago. And they're trying to get a formidable way with. Treatment plan expansion. And he, he said, not happening. They, they, they wanted to increase two, and she did, said, not, not gonna happen, you're not gonna get here, but they were having. It was some kind of arrangement of the day, they made it. The day, the way, where they grow, they're going home. Um. And this is how. A number of communities work together, and they're working on plant expansion. Um, and it's, you're standing for them to go to, the, the treatment standards. But we're just gonna maintain your basis, it's gonna. So beyond the biological, to the conditional pain and freedom. Um, and the different processes that you have to do. Uh, and like, for that treatment, these ones. With, uh, grand, like, activate, call, and U B, and those kinds of things. Which will ever. You can't compare, all four down, and, and, there's, there's one, there's one, there's nothing. Different. Other questions? They found out on a pivot to stormwater. Completely differently. Still water comes in, the water that another major, we don't talk a lot about stormwater, I mean, I'm gonna back up and. Define stormwater. I mean, all right, so, just like I talked about system, the updates. The general assembly, even several years ago, many years ago. Um, created a statute to allow other communities to adopt, it's the only one you feel it's big. And it prescribes how we're supposed to do it, so that it's same. Analysis from community, community, or it's fair. Um, and, and the question to this, this is what that is, is that. Um, you know, you're not using it to, to compete against one community, although there's. That you, everybody has to use, play on the same set of words. Uh, but the same allows for communities to adopt a stormwater children. And essentially what that does, allow you to create a storm program. So it, it, it don't take on operational expenses of the system. Uh, the, the reflection, uh, they're free moving those kinds of things. And also the capital budgets. That you've got stormwater, one of the problem, or the classing, like, thirty five, you know, the company type of things. So those continue to grow, um, uh, over the year, and they've been around five or eight. The home is exactly, but at least twenty years, they won't care a lot. Um, and it's early two thousand, uh, when, when that legislation was put, so a hundred people top, it's only because. How do you do that? The way the, the statutes prescribe, and you have to come up with an E R U, this is what's on the equivalent residential unit. So we, we did an analysis, you can kind of represent the example of, of a town, what's out, she knocked them off like the here. And when you use an air photographer, so what is a typical home, how much in purpose, purpose do they have? Rooftops, driveways, patio, there's those kind of. So, so that was the impact of it having on stormwater. If you don't have any in purpose, it can openly, I think it's a good one. None of them got off those terms. Okay, so our analysis came up with that, the average base of the sample is about thirty one hundred square feet. For, for residential unit in South City. And today you have nineteen hundred forty one developed residential property, a lot of the home. That, um, so each one of those, down thirty one hundred, they were now in purpose service, though, that you have in your, in your residential section of South City. So the reason you have to do the equivalent residential unit is when you get away from single family residential, you get department complexes, shopping centers. Uh, industrial facilities that have huge buildings and rooftops and parking lots. How do you fairly compare that? So think about Walmart. They've got a whole lot over thirty one hundred square feet of purpose service. Um, you know, they're building the longest property, sixty, seventy thousand, thirty. Not to mention parking and everything else. So you have to take that E R U, and so we, our analysis, we have five hundred twenty eight non-residential property in South City. And you do the math there, and it comes out to five thousand seven hundred eighty two. Equivalent residential units, units, with that clear purpose, for the, for the non-residential areas. Um. So that's how it's applied, you do that multiplier, depending upon, so for the typical home. Most of the areas, you just come up with this average, and they charge an average for a home. But when you get into the non-residential, based upon their impact. So you, you do the analysis, so that, um, McDonald's had X numbers per feet of in purpose service. Walmart's gonna have probably ten X times in purpose service, because it's, they're paying up a high fee based upon the purpose service. So that it, that it's fair, um, based on their impact, the stormwater serving. And they can see there, what's going down, in North Carolina, there's a broad range of, of stormwater utility fees. And, um, they have been established, the average. Is three to eight dollars, and notice a five dollar range here, some of them are way up to twenty dollars. Um. But, uh, but looking kind of at the average, the, 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 the kind of sweet spot. So if you were to establish a, if you were to take one dollar a month for E R U. That would generate about ninety three thousand dollars. That would generate about ninety three thousand dollars income. For South City. And so if you wanted to generate two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, per year to begin a stormwater program. That's two dollars sixty million. And when you, instead of both community, how they manage for that, that. If you said in two sixty nine, you collect a figure of water bill, it's just a lot, one water bill. You collect each one. And it's, and for the non-residential, the multiplication sign. Has collected that one, so it's paid with the waters you're there. And so on a typical residential home, any, they pay over thirty two dollars. Uh, so that creates a system or keep, create a revenue stream for the town. Um. To, uh, to create a program, so that you can do some of the, you may not be able to do that. Or typical level that you're doing today. And to, to begin to address some of those stormwater capital needs that you might be funding. Um, and by creating a program too, it's important that you have, you can probably say you have a list of fifty stormwater projects were aired, where you've got complaints from property owners about problem. Um. And so how do you address that, we guess, yeah, let's create a system to set up ours of those projects, so it's administrative fairly and equally, those kinds of things. But this creates a revenue stream to be able to do that. Um, and think about, I encourage you to think about maybe the growth is charted with that. Of here. I'm sure it's. But as you brother, this is going to become bigger and bigger problem. Challenge to deal with, so then create a revenue, make it bigger to address. And, and it's, you know, part of not taking your profit tax funds. For that, so based upon that impact, how it's like with large schools, those that use more water payment. Those that have a bigger impact, only stormwater system pay. That's exactly the rationale behind, behind this.
Question, yeah, so. When you were talking about the nineteen hundred forty one developed residential parcels, is that just in, in towns, is that within the city limits, or we, but we also. Exactly, but the city, okay, so, so this, with the stormwater, the stormwater use, or the stormwater fee will be only in town, you would not.
That's, that's a great one, you can't, the city's not allowed to change, not allowed to spend. Public funds outside channels, just like you can't build an open site. You can send one super, but you can't build, you can't build bars, then those kinds of things.
You're going to find a lot of problem that you. Missed that. Or back in the bay for the stormwater.
Not unusual. Uh, take for all neighborhoods, you'll find all kinds of.
Over here.
So if you have an example of what other towns use a stormwater.
Uh, yeah, it's kind of all over, but, um. One extreme, which I do not recommend. Um, one of the large, even the these. They use every bit of paper, they pay for their public works to have, you know, pay for the, the back of the equipment. Uh, to do the day maintenance, you know, cleaning out ditches, cleaning out holes. They're not spending any money on the capital. So they're not able to rest and they have a collapsing core, or a collapsing pipe, or whatever it might be, or flooding problem. Where upstream, there's been more development, there's more depth, more flow down in the lower part of the basin. Um. So there's normally a balance, again, you pay the public community what their needs are, and keep in mind, this is something I would encourage you to. To grow into. Don't try to fix it all in one day. Um. But to, to address those basic needs and have a plan, again, this is something that as you grow, you're generating more revenue, you should consider including this in time and time as well. And the so-called thought through of maintaining this. You know, use it for streets with another example. You have to replace that street with a whole lot more sense in the math when you use that. And the people, again, that operate, you're fully operate system there, they. Getting increases, and you're, and you're over there, it just goes up. You know, local government's not a game to the college of real business. Your people intensive business. And, um, so it's, it is, it's, you have a hard job, I think, in every position.
Another question, um, the, and the analysis, does that include, um, anything that, and is it, does it make an assumption that the towns, the, um, the town limits stay consistent? Or is there really an expectation that we will annex?
This is a snapshot of today.
I'm, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the future, we need your analysis and financial model.
Uh, oh, for the, for the. Yeah, uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's looking at, with all that growth, you can't, we.
Yeah.
Forty nine thousand, well, you could, but. Um, you know, most people go out before they go look. You know, a great example of that is the, the town of Cary, they're about, they're matched, there's no land left there. So for them to continue to grow, they're having to go, you can see that with the redevelopment. They're in the place of Cary, they go on.
Um, bring them, read my answer, because, you know, obviously with the, um, with the water and race water, you go outside of town limits. Then there's that resulting, if you, if you annex additional areas, then there's the balance, okay, well, the water goes down rather than.
Yeah, and, and part of the. The fear behind double rates.
Mm-hmm.
Is that. You know, there are other costs that the town have and build a system that you're not capturing. Through risk. You know, the health and the finance department, healthcare, management, all of those kinds of things. I mean, and so that, and so they're not supporting the community, but you'll get the profit taxes as you add, as you add to develop. Um, and, but yeah, they'll, they'll change it, yeah.
Change that.
Change that.
Business model. A great question.
Any other questions? I'm just saying, yeah, that's, as a P. Uh, the thing from the past, you can knock off, but you're sure it's all of these subjects in the stormwater fee. Well, it may not pay. Access. Uh, consideration as well. And, and there's things that we can do to mitigate our stormwater costs, but. So while maybe it's stormwater issues under this, or all sister. But we've actually contributed to the problem by continuing to overload the street. Beyond. Um, where it's level, it's creating run issues that create more erosion. That's, that's driving our own operating fault.
Would, would the same be true to system development fees that, uh, number one, C three?
Hey, that's because they're not paying for the tax. They would face it with development fee.
If they don't, if they don't, if they forget rent.
Those fees, not that. That would be like any new development. Again, they're taken based on meter size, but that's meters, what are the table end up being? Um, that's the fee that they would pay when you said, there's no place when you said to me everything that. Right, because the assumption is that a fee is based on consumption.
Right.
Or a fact based on value. Any other questions? So thank you all, allowing us to join you this evening, thank you for your performance, and we're, we're always welcome with your staff. And look forward to. Thank you much.
It's been. Well, are we even, we're, we're stretching, what, what water?
Anybody have any vision of that?
Pretty much.
He's going to get one, just set it there next to it. I'm sure by the way. The, the letter we emailed, I think Kim emailed to y'all last week, maybe on Thursday probably.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just a file with the memo we have, we're going to set the deal on it. This is what we're using as our strategy, working in flat ocean with Wolf Speed, Mayor Farrell, the next encouraged, are obvious. Um, they're talking with Ken Morris, uh, talking about the developers and fans, whether they try to help us. We're all kind of, we're trying to take and all we love and approach, working with all these partners, that's just advantage. Um, we've just bought into a political process, we've got. Democratic representation under the. Uh, Republican legislature, but we got to, uh. Make sure that we're attacking this issue from all sides.
Now, how, how does this, um, back into or maybe offset? Uh, I guess what we're going to be receiving from Fries and Nichols.
I would operate on the assumption that it is not.
That whatever Fries and Nichols presents would be inefficient to the city, but I mean.
That's right, what, what he presented is not for this. What was proposed, that, that's a, in his word, that's a general recommendation. For what's going to come from a more detailed report there.
So this is just to begin, it's up to. Uh, six. Uh, six M G D, you know, the necessary accoutrements that go along with it.
So item one, we're trying to rank the, and it's not focused on quality. And one is the cost that we deal with on the. The upgrade reporting six M G D will be for the like.
Okay, and, and in two, three, a letter of supporting factors for the point.
Two and three are more directly devoted to what's needed for growth and point screen and for the planet. Four for eleven are major high and high front kids. That if we don't address them now at this cost, and we put more pressure on a system, it's going to drive the cost even higher.
So this is just to get us. Where we need to be so that in the future we can get.
This will be now, we, this will be twenty years.
It's only a fifty year.
I got you, this is right, right, you're, you're going to come, when I had to bring the liberal canyon, or it's going to be a half going down. It's the long term.
That's.
Yes.
But this is short, this is, doesn't really mean you have to the next couple of years. And this is, and I, this is because we're committed to all of it, we'll settle them, we'll speak to them.
Right.
This is what's necessary to make that happen. So obviously we want to help the state, but, but obviously we see we're behind the eight ball. These, these costs are not created over a period of time. You mean, we have exceptionally high I N I issue with solid, but, and, and it's unfortunate because it drops the cost. The one thing you're going to consider mitigating costs is every time you address I N I, it does improve, uh, your water loss situation. And I feel it, because we're treating tons of, of hotel water that's. Really unused. We can either just for leaking in. Um, that can cut down your operations when you produce that, so sooner these I N I should be addressed, the more fish you're selling. But, but it's obviously you've got years of I N I that were never, that never been fixed. But when we add even more passing for those of them. You can imagine it'll blow out more.
So I see a lot of line. Uh, rehabilitation. And figuring those out for a lot of I N I issues. Over the one.
And, and that's putting all the I N I issues in solid, it's the longer we're there, those are the big, those are the bigger ticket items that need to happen, get, get addressed in the short term. You will never completely resolve that, you can sort of bring any line in and still have a I N I issue. The future of the line where there's such a big ticket items, if we don't address them, that's going to be thick and get away from us.
And down the counter, you know, the poor. That's where you can find it.
And it's some of the old slot. How, how can you follow? How can your best material line, five in terms of material, should probably work and show up then.
Yeah.
Work around. Right.
Okay, so, um.
But I, I didn't ever get that chance, I mean, sometimes everybody doesn't get it there. Yeah, so I didn't know what input, or what, most of all, it's definitely for our.
I mean, I think we just need to, like you said, get it on all points. And just cross our fingers that the state covers the reason. As much of the seventh domain as we can possibly get. I think you're correct, you're correct, we will be hit a lot plus with all our partners, and.
We have requests. Well, how much can be requested this time?
Okay, okay.
I shared already, but seventy, so we're requesting seventy five million dollars, seventy five million dollars from state. Senator, I had this. That's what we're asking for.
What do you think to get?
I'll be back, say that, but, but. Who's on the ones, or, or I'm pretty, you know, ask for a lot, except to get something less than what you can. In hot.
You're like, whenever we can ask, just to find me, I guess, I think.
Well, you. You got some competing interests to say right now, but you got. The House budget is moving incredibly fast. So this is going to have to be addressed on Senate side. Because, um, the House is, it's set aside pot money. For this area of plumbing. Um, but it's going to make all of us compete for the pot money, instead of saying, this is what South City needs, it's just. A bucket. Obviously, when the Senate passes their budget, they'll have to go through a reconciliation process on that. And the Senate, I think, will be a lot more of a deliver process, because the House moves so fast. And there is money out there for problems, they have, they've got a pretty big surplus in the state budget, so that, that's. A positive, money does it too, they can't get money that I have. Our job is to make sure that we be put to the top of the list if money is distributed for infrastructure, because it's been considered first. So we're making sure, we're talking to the Republicans, we're talking to the Democrats, we're talking to our local people, we're talking to leadership. We're talking to Wolf Speed, um, everybody's.
Sure.
Everybody's on the same sheet.
Is Rand, is Rand, I'm assuming there's still having to talk with their consultant, because they, they, it does, it would make sense if they were to ask.
If that's.
Well, or additional funding. Man, so.
Oh, yeah.
Randolph County.
Yes.
Right, yeah, I thought originally, where, you know. They did request one of the other two points, and, and their man, they didn't have that for the wall, because that's probably a good reason. Um, but unfortunately, they don't actually. Yeah, but they, they already increased.
What, what happened in that idea of now the joint plant can reach with the student G D?
They would have to do that. I'm sure they're there.
Yeah. Now, it's a. Well, I think, I think eventually, I mean, I think we got, we can get there, I think, what, what are they looking at now? And then, you know, what, what, there are a quarter thousand young women. So, yeah, so there's. Yeah, they won't, they're, I mean, I think that they're available, the infrastructure run up. The expertise run up, I think they're, that, it's going to be, it's going to end up being, I, I honestly believe it's going to end up being a, a regional workforce. It's gonna be, it's gonna end up being, I, I honestly believe it's gonna end up being a, a regional workforce. But again, and, and that's not, very common in President's condition is that is, is there three more things? Is it, is it too, is it too early to talk to state to get additional allocation at a quarter one? And then we're talking about sourcing the water due to the merit when we're, you know, eleven million gallons. It's soon to be asking for addition or for allocation at a quarter one.
Wait, wait, can't.
Wow.
I don't think we can back in the door like.
What, doesn't wait, can't.
And, and just to clear it up, our third or third was. The second or third was.
Six million.
And we can, you can build another white spark plant, you can't create a water, you can't. So that, the long term, that can be.
So I think, I think, what, what you, what you end up doing is you end up recycling water. Is you take, you take what's coming out on the backup stream and reuse it for everything. So you end up, you, you treat it on, on that and you pump it back up and then you treat it on in. I think that's what, what, what ends up, and that's when we're gonna, we can get additional water.
They, they, they wait for it.
Yeah, I think that's, and, and ultimately, and, and that, you know, and if we, doing that, that. Some degree, I think you can talk about the environmentalists and, and they, that's satisfying to some degree. Because you're not adding additional outflow downstream. But I think that's gotta be something that's, that's considering in the, in the design base.
Yeah. It's a regional.
Yeah, you know, like I said, can't create a water, and here's what it is, but.
Okay, alright. What, what questions does the board have? Don't make sure we're on the same page.
Oh, this document?
Yes.
I mean, we.
Yeah, so what I, you know, the other thing is, at some point, I mean, I, I don't know what the feasibility is, something we have to think about. Is to do is, as we look at all the way that you get money from the state and on. We, it is, is a, it's put in bond at some point down the road, considering that that's part of the whole financial package.
Sure, so, so when you're talking about utilities, you typically, they're in a revenue bond.
Right.
You're a revenue bond, that means you were pledging the proceeds from utility payments paid at bond, so. No matter what you pledge, that's taken off top first.
So, so if we did that as opposed to what they may be requen, uh, recommending, we may have to reevaluate that further.
That's correct. And these are bigger spending operational costs. That's a, that's a big difference when you're talking about bonding or a plant that created.
Well, it's, and they have to think about it, I mean, you get it to, to, to all the point. Their, their revenue source that they're kind of drying up, I mean, we can ask, we can only go back and ask the state so many times, money. And then if there's, grants aren't available and low, and yes, you can do low interest loans, then you're, you're taking on the debt service.
And, and so if we don't, if it's seventy-five million. And we don't, it's gonna fail for the future, there are options under the, to, to, if you don't, we have to get some.
Well, and, and so this too, if we're going out for a revenue bond, that's typically part of the four to years. So if the need for, just what I was saying, the need for non-six MGD to come up within thirty or forty years.
Oh, yeah.
So you can think of a situation where you're doing, get a second revenue bond after a time again.
Everybody has one.
And you've already got one.
There's nothing there.
Exactly. Well, legally though, but the rate payers might know what that.
Well, once you divide that to be on, on down, and if anybody works for one, it's less likely that they'll go to the second.
For revenue bond, what I'm, what you're on.
Oh, yeah.
General obligation bond.
It was that, whatever you buy.
Right, right. Revenue obligation bond, which is merely a big bonus or a portion of operation upgrades, so it's typically done of all facilities. But, but those, it's someone, it's kind of thinking about the inverse of, of revenue bond, revenue bond pledge utilfully right. General obligation bond requires hack call.
The revenue bond would cover all these items, both for eleven?
I, I, I don't think we're looking, I don't think we're looking at revenue bond for that.
I love saying, it could, it could, you know, so.
Revenue bond, yes, there, there's a bond out there for any value in the world today, it's just, but all these people serve.
Yeah, but I think we'll buy, and we'll know, we'll know sooner rather than later, rather than on the. Instead of by the install.
It would be unusual using this revenue bond or an INI issue.
Yeah.
It's very common for one that creates.
Okay.
And the, the challenge is, we don't have, we don't have the money to flow with, we're going to talk about. You may get a grant for a pay project, but even there, the local market is one percent, which is still a side of a chunk of money.
Out of these, these are projects, these utility projects, you're back with, with the memo. Putting the second.
I don't know, I'm just.
This, this spreadsheet.
Yes.
Is this an additional forty-three million or is it somehow committed to?
No, this is efficient, I'm not, it's a different plot, it's a different conversation. The memo addresses future projects of the plant and I have the heat to be addressed. The larger sheet that you have is current capital utility projects you have in your finances from right now.
So this is what we're currently focusing?
Correct. We've been trying to improve and work on financing and wanting to give this to you, so you could have a chance to see this illustrated. This is just utilities, this is not all the town capital projects. Now, most, most towns have, you know, virtual five capital projects going on at one time, we've got thirty capital projects going on. So it's, it's very easy to get confused and mixed up, and we have a whole lot going on and more to come. This is just about what she was thinking tied to water service.
And it looks like most of these are funded solely through us without debt service loans, one, two, three, four. Five of these have external sources of funding.
And some of them, even though they pay, not one of them's a project that's funded by. Like the, the media replaced the project, you remember, we used to large, short part of our, all the money. Fund that, so that, you know, one point six seven is what's remaining. Blood run pump station, we, we need to contribute third itself, but seven percent, I think, for the bridge program.
Which one's the one for the?
That, that's the one I.
No.
Summer's project, there's so many, we only have numbers, insist to be able. Each of these has to be set up as a separate fund. So the benefit of having to set up this way of capital project is their role year to year. So when we talk about our, our operating, like each of our departments, this is really independent of that. The department's closed out every June thirty. When midnight June thirty, those budgets go away, we have a brand new budget starting July one. These roles, these never end until we close that.
So you'd be considering, I guess, the question I had, and, and we're looking at this, I, I see day open, I don't see projected completion dates.
Right, well, and for all of these, I, I know we have to get to completion based at this point. All of them are so new, we don't have them, like, the last thing, AIA, those, those have been my, uh, we just got awarded last month.
Which one?
Uh, so we're at the end of four and seven projects.
This is the section, and then.
Most of all of those that have the, that can be in on the front, and then they have federal funding. Most of all the new federal funding is coming from ARPA and that has to be spent by twenty-six. So that's really, um, a lot of those new projects, that's, that's the year we're looking.
Okay, did not think.
We are trying to work on this for our other homes as well, we've got at least four capital projects prepared for. We got nearly this new project going on with general fund. Three of them, they know all the battle, they call different comprehensive and master plan, they're working on, it'll. Take it long, they, they, it's, it's a lot. And, and this is what we're already.
Well, I mean, but it's, it's needed because of the projected burden, uh, we've set it. You know, for two, too many years, we just keep, you can't, you know, you gotta pay the price.
Well, I, I know this could be some of those challenges, I want to come to, fun, really getting your mind around, understanding, get across, we don't spend a lot of time talking about it in the fourth year. And we want to go to budget, we're thinking about how are we gonna allocate funds between group, apartment, environment, public works. These things just keep going on in the background, so if you want to have a chance to bring me up to speed, that these things are important, happening, going on in the background too.
Well, it's often good to know when people say, what are you doing? Well, with that, whatever, we have fifteen, uh, public projects that we're working on here and we're working on, so, yeah, people. People always ask me, when, you know, when you doing, I'll say, I'm, something I need, but.
And this is not been before, we've set up well historically in our, our, so a lot of work has gone into making sure the account is gonna correct that it comes to these products.
And I, it, it just, just, uh, you know, to, to, to Mr. Page's point. I don't know that, I mean, the, obviously the general public doesn't know that these projects going on, is there, is there, we can work, kind of, just, we, we, we get a story on, hey, you know, here's your. Things that the town has going on.
Cause they, 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 we get a lot of complaints, particularly on the utility side. We usually get a lot of complaints on the public works side, but, you know, thank you for, for that. But we still get a lot of complaints in utility. This is, I have a favorable impact to every citizen in the town. And if they need to do that, we actually are working on these projects, we do actually hear them and we're trying to address it.
They're spending twenty-three million dollars to try to fix.
Then, you know, then they'll, they'll understand, they can not go back to this.
Well, it makes a seventeen dollar increase on one of them, say, a little more powerful, I guess, with forty-three million dollars in capital projects. So that, that's a lot of seventeen dollar charges to pay for something after that.
Well, that, that, that's the exact point, I think, that, that is, when, when you, when you tell somebody you, you that. You're gonna spend, they're gonna have to spend the money, so what, what are you spending on?
Yeah, and so, and so we say, well, we need this, seventy-five million, and we produce eleven projects. And produce fifteen projects, we know, we bring them, this is all working on. And, and we're not just taxpayer, we're not just putting it on you, we've reached out to state, local, federal, private agencies to get funding. So I mean, there's a whole list of them, go on, whether grant, or state grant funding there, yeah, and. So I think this also, this is to explain, uh, because the rate is, it's coming. But then the citizens, they, they're not alone, the state's out, the federal government's out.
And again, it's not on the back, it's not on the back of the, the water use.
Yeah.
We have a lot of other funding that, that we need to improve.
Improve everybody's life.
Right, well, and, you know, I've been, part of rate increases is another channel, I can tell you. It's, it's always a hard conversation, but when it comes to grant funding, part of the evaluation process is what are your rates? If they end the river, they can blow, they can give you many grants.
Is, is you should, yeah, and I, I see exactly why they don't say anything, I carry some of the love yourself.
And, and it's a top victory, so we need, we need to charge people no money to get no money, but that is, that is part of the evaluation makers.
Yeah.
It is uncharging what, what's considered as possible fee, so the state, everything on the grant, like the water issue. But the state's gonna look at it and say, well, if you want a grant, then we need to know that you were doing as much as you can.
Exactly.
Over the birds.
Get it, get it.
Do the, because, Kenny, you can do what you want to do here. We're going to people, that own business next, right? They use nine-nine, you're going to be this one. Yeah, that's what.
First, first of all, we're gonna discuss everything and everything, and if they came back to that issue.
That'd be great, but before we just bring it up, let's people know, when. Between these eleven and these fifteen, that's twenty-six projects that we want. But seeking funding along and through the whole town.
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot towards that, I mean, it's, it's unusual to have this sort of, uh, rate, uh. And that the animal found that, it's, some, some of it's the benefit and cost of growth, and some of it's catching up and things that probably shouldn't have been done in a year ago. The, all the, all the stormwater discussion, you know, that's, that's a new topic, we gotta start before. The lack, the laxity we're in, which is, well, it's the thing, laxity, playless, uh, play with storm, we're giving playing projects. We, you know, we worked with Rattell to get the, the grant for the AI and the laxy. That's essentially an inventory analysis, inventory that's confusing for stormwater. But if we were to do a stormwater program, we also have a grant to help us set that up, so that we'll have an assessment to know what stormwater projects we hang out, and we'll start ranking projects. That'll take a couple of years, but we have, we can address, outside of the problem, stormwater. So we even have to help with that, we don't have in-house engineering, so it helped more to have, um. A grant to assist with identifying the front, and, and doing it obviously in an objective way, not saying, you know, we're not spreading the love and trying to get. Just each area of the town, but we're saying these really are the problems that greatly most need. And, and, and it's a major problem in Zalos City, the, the hypocrisy lends itself to having a lot of stormwater issues. And particularly different twenty-two's are loaded and stored, and oftentimes when the laws, the residents of the town. Chris Austin made many points about stormwater issues in his district, and I, and I had to tell him, um, on multiple occasions. Love to fix that, but we can't, cause that'd be taking money out of streets, and we don't have any money dedicated for.
But this can help us if we start this stormwater.
That's right.
Uh, cause you got this one too, and we push you back to, you know, park shopping center areas.
There's a, there's only a requirement on stage, you show a small percentage of that money, and then you know, before it's complicated, you get that outreach. Beyond that, you can tell by the discretion of how you spend that money. While you're getting this grant, so that your laxy is completed, I would recommend off the bat, if we had that, to file it back in charge. If we did that, that would allow us to pick up these three sixty-five, no more leaf bagging, we could pick up these, no one had to bag these anymore, we get a longer one.
And then, and then plus you wouldn't have to have as much, uh, people, you know, seeing, seeing labor costs.
One man, one man. You know, it's, it's often you have to keep up and commit to, you know, every five, seven years you need to die. But the benefit of that is, you have a fun set of guys to do that. And I, I'm sure you're very well aware, it's, it's far and harder than buying equipment operators that has that C P L license that you gotta have. This cuts down on the need to have many drivers, you just need that one person. In fact, you have individuals in street maintenance doing other assignments to neutide and prove the conditions of the town, so that just approach it primarily on leaf collection. We've been really effective at cutting out the overtime in shared streets. So this would kind of ensure that it stays that way, but one man can handle the operation. So that's a, that's kind of a window there to say, what would we do up front while waiting for details from the last? We've got a major nearby being that we already dedicate funding for, we'll say, year one.
As we start working with Freeze and Nichols to develop this stormwater program, you know, he gave up some rates there in between. Three and eight dollars, what's your, what's your instincts on where, with our town, our stormwater issues, what's your instincts on where we should pay that?
I'll depend on how great it's gonna be by two projects. I'll, I'll, how great is it going to be about two projects? Uh. Probably get, I think, I tried to get them a little bit up. About five. I would. Cause that, because what he had on there with two sixty-nine, that, that would give you two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
That would help a truck, that's something that helped a few projects. And, and the other piece to consider is you may have some projects that are very expensive, maybe a million dollar project. Um, you can get some of the fun at the local grant badge. But you got money to set aside and go fund them. So you want to have some of them there. Um, as we grow, we currently do a little bit of the street sweeping downtown, made it to a point you want to have a street sweeper. All the time, is something to consider, that's two hundred thousand dollars as well. So you're small.
Let's see, I talked to the, um, single man operation, in fact, in the truck itself, three fifty?
So, no, it's not that high, it, it really depends on which route we want to go, whether we want to get a bigger truck that would require a CBL. That's entirely based on weight, or we can get a smaller truck that would require a, a CBL. But it's, it'll give us more flexibility to operate it, but we got to dump more, so it wouldn't be quite as efficient. That's one of our biggest challenges is, we lose a lot of time going back and forth from landfill to dump. Um, so, Calum has some discussions on that one. Calum wants to.
We had, you see, our thirty-dollar day, and I didn't have a day, he probably was happy with three hours. Back and forth, you know, well, so.
You only pick up for four and a half thousand of these money.
We don't do it about all day, we'll be shot. We, we have shot time, thirty minutes of, thirty minutes back, that's one of those, thirty minutes of, thirty minutes back. Two of us, so in the run of the day, I mean, giving a brush or weed, limb, whatever. He's only working physically for, you know. But in the same token, I say physically, he said, I concentrate getting that truck up there and back, so.
You also got to factor contingency planning in, as soon as the worst happens. But most leagues are all, all around, and all truck groups, and it's our mission for a week, what we do. So we got to make sure we have all the guts like we're doing now and crew, let me, we continue the operation today for, for long chance of God service, hopefully.
Is there a way, was small truck to move into a bigger truck? From most pool to transfer to a larger.
Can we know unless we dump it on the ground and then pick it back up? Or put a truck in our tire, two, two, another few. I mean, only other thing that possibly work is we don't get two trucks, we have to dump it into a container. And you gotta take that container to the market, so. You know, we get a little bit.
Incinerator.
When later, like, then sort of here. That's an organic interior, we used to dump that, uh, during this, uh, uh, glue there, so, first. Yeah, and just deliver it out and then brought, do whatever, go through the natural process, go through the haul. But we're hauling, hey, one night, so we're on the leaves, we're taking those to individual customers, we're taking, and then making their own malt or something, you know. You don't have things with that.
You still have to be requested, or whether you not be requested, you still have to, you have to, so, like, we hang out the time, or people call, or the local forms, or if you're running boats. We will take care of it, but ultimately, if we have a little intent, it can happen to those who live here, so. Whether you request, you get it.
We can't, we can't just leave now, I don't want to give questions to, can they split leave, you know, follow up? Like, can it remain somewhere, the natural rock?
You wouldn't want to do that, cause after a certain amount of time, if you don't leave the compost, you may keep. Once I make anything, it will eventually, but, it keeps stacking and stacking and stacking. I had many occasions where we worked a couple of weeks putting out a compost now, because it just didn't. So when you jump, dump, you want to review, you shouldn't be dumping over the coast where you were, more convenient, you know. Here we go, so you got to be very careful when you dump that amount of leaves. Or man, time, we have leaves or house or all, it will, but.
And on your, uh, this is something I think is coming up, Sarah, that, um, you, uh, uh, building crews, we got two, right? And that's the one where you're running them down the road, sand, on regular places, and we're losing, but we're losing now, the time and the truth. And, uh, I, I remember a couple of things over the years you talked about, with some of this household and trash that we begin, like furniture. All of that, we do all that the same for the, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, and I know at one time when we had talked about, I don't think it ever got, um, emptying, and was starting a fee to go. Uh, work out, and I, best I remember was the last dollar, that's a long time. It was like the one thing that was wrapped, so it was stacked through, anything after that, and some fee involved in it. And I think another part of that project was, uh, where we had the repeat, lack of better term, repeat. Pickups in the same place all the time, or it might have been bringing in, uh, or it might have been, maybe we had also the front, they continued, like. Lot of furniture, uh, or standing there, we do, thank you, it kind of said, it's possible, isn't it?
So I brought that up to y'all when I interviewed y'all here, and saying, one would be thrown back to have a flat fee up front on the utility deal, and then we just pick up there. We really have a reactive approach and say, okay, we'll pick up, don't shoot, and then we're going to charge you, people don't want to pay it, town is going to do it. Or someone, or typically someone may say, well, this stuff got out from my house, if somebody dumped it, I just put it there. But then it's already a, who created the mess? And you have, if you have something about property, this charge and say, we have a lot of them to pick up, they haven't had a way to be able to assess it, say. We can average it out and say, we're spending this much on the truck, the operation, the man that does the pickup, the capitalization of the equipment. This is the cost per year, work that into a fee and just charge across the town. We can do that, now that's separate from the, uh, so cutting down trees and putting wood in them, we're cutting trees down, we shouldn't be picking that up, they need to handle that. Uh, that's a whole pass there, I think, costs all the time. But so it puts couch in front of their house, and we thought, y'all get calls, I get calls about why don't we get in that couch? You know, it, it creates frustration for our partners, instead of us seeing it and being like, yeah.
The flat fee approach is pretty reasonable, I do think that we already have that in, in place, that we're not, not, the thing that we have in place.
Yeah.
Is the contractor, uh, that, I think we've done, done a few years back, did we not?
They were, it gets passed, and we, we don't, we don't pick up, I mean, you know, but I don't know that that, that's ever been.
Oh, it's gone down.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, we got all of them, Ben, well, Cal, put that inside, we're done, it isn't working.
That's weird.
And plus, he, uh, kept, kept, uh, with, uh, the big truck to, uh, bring the guys to drop me, you know, his work.
Why you put that no gun sign in front of table, place and stone grates? But there's no ground under, scalpels, tables, mats.
Yeah, and all of that, right.
All sorts of, all, I think, yeah.
And the second part of what Cal said, it was, so. Something else in, in current, we're finding, they've been running the trucks up and down the road. We used to have a transit, but, you know, the way that, then you got, where, like, we can take it down there, put it, we can lift it in the dumpster, whatever, they come back and whatever it is. Then haul the dumpster, and if I took, run another down the road. And, you know, that, that's a lot of wear and tear on those two vehicles, there are eighty, eighty vehicles. I forewarned myself, if, if we could, now that we have, we found that, uh, we ran off takeout, we know, there's a question. But that would be something that we can, we can add it somewhere, where we could have a transit first day to our own. For like the house always, fill up a great big, don't pull it, you can pull it, but not tie it over. But our boots books, you know, and you probably could get more. Put it, you had a transit first day, if you back, you know, whatever, it's something, we got back oaks and all that kind of. Packs, and, uh, take a great load at one time. And that's something, I've thought about that a ton too, because I've seen the trucks a lot, on those four, that, forty-one, forty-seven, uh, level. I don't know. And you.
Well, so good reading that, cause you, you, I think, go, you were talking about that, and he said, that, that operation was a lot moved, you know, basically, to have it done, basically, so. That conversation he's had maybe a week ago, and that's not a new one to explore, you know, I don't know, I can't see how far I can go on tour, but. Maybe trying to reestablish, uh, a place that you can bring that home, it, it compact, it's getting all of them. It's saving so much more time, because you need to respect, because it's getting packed, maybe.
We have a lot of room properties in Zoll City, we have a lot of room property, give them the wrong, or, people move out and it's leaving stuff. You have all, you have, and, and who are you going to talk to, nobody there.
Who are you going to talk to?
Well, is a confidant.
Well, they've got data, some data.
What, what's your advice to start with, flat fee idea for a picture?
We haven't looked at it.
Yeah, I, I think it's something, I think it's something we need to take a look at, it, something I've known, he got in the hole, he got better. Here in the last year or so, it seemed like there was a resurgence of that, especially where my fault.
Well, they're, we can just say, we're not going to do it in years long, for holding off ourselves, and, you, I mean, you know, that, that, that's certainly an option, I mean. You know, do you, you know, especially if we, we address the, the appearance of the town, do we even want people to step out of her? We can, in, in, I mean, do we want? I mean.
You want to say? If you don't, we'll do it, and that's what you might need. Well, maybe you can put some, uh, proposals together.
I think, I think we need to revisit, we had to revisit that a lot.
Well, that's not a good time, there was, uh, even that, that, when it, when it came, we could pick it up, but the thing is. If it was paid for, then it wasn't for the picture.
That's what you're saying, that's hard. We, we looked at a couple of different models, like the double pickup, one time we even talked about, let's just get away from it, and, thanks, yeah, the flat face, I think. We put a couple of different proposals together.
I think we, I think we did enact the fee.
We.
We just haven't.
Yeah, as far as the, they, the diameter, I think, the, the could be taken. I remember that. Well, then we got zero, well, they know.
That's, probably, but, yeah, I, I thought this came on, oh, there's a lot of, uh. Um, what we, uh, I can't call, that are not specific to, you know, they, they're just getting drafted generally, really, in there. That it would be nice if we could, well, it would be probably better to at least get a little bit of the hand in the moment. And, uh, properly cook and some of that, because, just thinking about it, there's probably a small team. Folks that have the hand, their goodness of everybody else in the town, which you have, so, there's some that have tremendous amount already early in the day.
There's some, you know, there's some services that we charge fees for, but you're never going to recover that cost, not on point, you're not trying to recover costs, but people already are trying to cover all that, that cost. Around the library, but things like, the type of public works, like the water, sewer, and fall pickup. These are things that make more sense, to make sure that you're identifying and full call and allocating that, so it's.
Yeah, and, and, probably, they're probably good, we did, what some of the others, but I think we did this before, in the high five. What those towns do, and it's all from, it's, you're like, don't do, we, we're not going to do it anymore, but. They, it's a large, rainy, different things, different town, so, oh, look at that.
And that's what we'd be very, very looking at, and, um, part of this, I've been asked to look at, but, I know we have some people, it's all that, very degrees, but. And the plan is all the, uh, part.
Do we have anything else on your item four, we'll move it for a second, or, or at least we print, print some with?
This, uh, for a while, this is it, try to call it, so it takes about two hours, they may, yeah.
Then, then we got, we got fifteen minutes for the process.
I'll make a note, we're doing a closed session, assuming by time, I'm doing fifty-one forty-three, three eleven, so.
We're going to promote, and we're going to say, and they're good.